Good evening, welcome to the Town of Rutland Office of the Select Board, a regular meeting. Tonight is Monday, September 23rd, happy autumn, 6:00 PM. Hereby call this meeting to order and open it. Could we please start by the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. As a reminder, these meetings are being recorded for transmission on Rutland Public Access Television and YouTube. We are live. Could I get a motion for approval of Treasury Warrant 7 and Payroll?
So move.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have one set of minutes from August 12th.
Motion approved, second.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you. We're just gonna fly right down the agenda. First thing up, under petitions, we have a request for a one-day liquor license from St. Patrick's Church. Some people here to speak on behalf of St. Patrick's Church. Who's taking the honors? The guy with the collar? Alright.
Well, the guy kinda comes into the territory. Good evening, everybody. As you may know, my name is Father James Boland, I'm the pastor over at St. Patrick's in Rutland, and we're having our third annual Fall Festival, which would've been our fourth annual if we didn't get rained out our first year. So, it is a wonderful, nice day from 11 to 4 there over at the parish on Saturday, October 5th, and it's just a one-day license so that we're able to potentially have people enjoy the day if they would like to by having a nice drink on the side. We're praying for good weather as well there, so that it all works out. So, yes, that would be a wonderful help, and we certainly invite all of you to come if you can spend a little time with us and enjoy it. It's $10 for an adult ticket, and you get to participate in the chili challenge and a whole bunch of other things, and I believe there's a cornhole tournament organized by one of my parishioners there, and I hope to do a little better this year. So, we're gonna see if I can rebound after okay showing last year. So, that's what I put before the committee, the selectmen, this evening.
Thanks, Father.
And the events, those 11 to 4, does anybody have any questions?
All the paperwork and everything is in...
Yep. Yep.
Just one minor addition, we do have a rain date for the following day, October 6th. If we get rained out, the term will be applicable for the following day if necessary, too.
What time is the second mass on Sunday?
It would be 12 to 5 on Sunday if it happened to rotate a day, so...
Okay.
It would make it a very, very busy day in St. Patrick's, so we're hoping for that good weather.
So, we'll need to just...
amend that, yeah?
Yeah, a little bit.
Through the chair, that's the same day as my daughter's baptism, I'm hoping that's not an omen, the liquor license request is not...
I will be up there to baptize your child at 12 noon as it happens with everything, so I will be able to take my way back to the temple.
As long as he's not in the middle of the cornhole tournament.
Priorities are...
In the words of St. Paul, "Be all things to all people."
Oh, nice touch. That was a good touch.
Do we need a motion to approve and amend? Or do we need to move, motion to amend?
Could I get a motion to approve it for both dates with the two different hours, and then I would think a motion to waive the fee?
Yep. Motion to approve the license as requested with the addition of the rain date the following day.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to waive the application fee for the one-day liquor license.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, unanimous. We are going to go slightly out of order, we have some other guests here tonight, and we're jumping down to letter X, number 10, Under New Business, 070, the 300th Anniversary Committee, a couple of them are here. We'd like to do those appointments. Why don't we take the people who are here, and then we'll hold out for the, revisit this agenda item in case the others show up. And so, I think I see, I know I see Mark Campbell, I know I see Christine Drouet. Is anyone else here? You are not on my list, Mrs. Campbell.
I have a question from the 4th of July Committee.
Oh.
How do they fit into this?
They just need to apply. I think the, I, I think that the two committees will have to figure out the appropriate relationship to have with each other. I would think at some point, there will be an enormous overlap, and that this committee will continue to grow as we get closer. There's no limit on the number of people on it, so that would be my expectation, but the committees will be able to work that out as time goes, yep.
The 4th of July needs to apply.
I, I think they, if they, if they wanna be on both and work it as the two separate events that we'll have to do it as, because there's so much prep to be done for the 300th that's a little different from the 4th of July prep, I would say it's probably the easiest.
If I may, through the chair, I think we talked about how best to handle this when we were talking about establishing the 300th Anniversary Committee. We decided we didn't want it to be expected that the 4th of July Committee take it on, but we didn't wanna feel, the 4th of July Committee feel that their toes were being stepped on. So, it was kind of, the 4th of July Committee's more than welcome to apply, but we didn't want the Committee to feel obligated that they had to serve on this if it was too much. Does that make sense?
If I may, through the chairs, the last thing we'd say is when it was created, too, a lot of what the 300th Anniversary Committee's doing is holding events to fundraise for the things that are taking place on the 300th. So, a lot of it's gonna be spread out throughout the year, so that's why it was kinda made as separate. But, it was at least my intention that once the two groups were seated, even though 300 is gonna be a rolling application period and unlimited amount of members to it, that at some point in time, there's some type of joint meeting to see if we can work out how the two can work together the best.
Thank you.
I'll just throw it out there, too, is I can be a kinda liaison at the beginning of this whole process to go in between myself and the other 4th of July Committee members, because, Mike, to your point, too, there's, I was around for the 250th and 270, actually 250th and 270th, and saw the amount of work that needs to go in, and the biggest part of it is, to your point, the fundraising aspect of it. And the parade, I mean, they know what's going on, we know what's going on as far as putting that together. The biggest part of that is going to be the dollar amount if we're going to do it.
Correct.
Correct.
I'll do that for now and get back to all of them and probably have them come to, you know, a future meeting.
Right.
Well, we're excited to get this off the ground. Thank you both so much for coming in tonight. Are there any questions for either of the applicants to the committee? You have our gratitude to get this kicking started off. Could I get a motion for Mark and Christine?
Motion to appoint Mark Campbell to the 300th Celebration Committee.
And Christine?
And Christine Drouet.
Thank you.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, welcome.
Thank you.
You're good. The clerk is going to sign these tonight, but then these cards, so that you're official, will go over to the town, to the community hall, so that you can get sworn in, and you can pick them up there. And you are welcome to stay with us, and you are welcome to leave. Thank you very much.
To the chair.
Yes.
Is it critical that the other one, the other applicants be here?
It's not. I think we can wait and revisit it. We won't not do it, but just in case they show up, I don't wanna have already named them, they might walk in the door in an hour, because they, if they had looked at this agenda, they would've thought they were on much later, which they were.
Well, perhaps by the time we get to that point in the agenda, if they're still not here, maybe we can make a decision to keep it moving forward. But, my other question is, so, they're now duly appointed. How do they convene? Should we, is it the board's responsibility to look at a chair for them?
Nope, they will choose their own chair. Mike will probably sit with them for their first meeting, give them kind of a broad role of where they're, where they're headed, give them their charge, and then they'll elect among themselves, and that's when Mark will bring up that he can do the liaison role for 4th of July, and they'll, yeah, go from there.
The town administrator will coordinate it.
I'm on the committee. Yeah, through the charge, I'm on the committee.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Alright, we're moving on, jumping back up. Is there anybody here for public comment?
Dick Williams, Overlook. Mr. Sherman beat you tonight, here. Give my guest. David Sherman, Patacros.
Thank you.
In regards to my letter of a couple of weeks ago about the intersection, any update on that?
Yeah, we've reached out to DOT to do a traffic study, so that we can get an official, we can't do any work on the road until they give the okay. Once they say, yes, we're gonna do the study, or no, we're not gonna do the study, that's something you do, we can take it over either way and then just do what we want to take care of it there. Joe did sign off on the speed limit sign request that was before the board a couple of weeks ago, to post the actual speed limit on Wachusett that hasn't been posted, so that people know that the speed limit on Wachusett is what it is. So, that'll be the first step that we do, but then on, from there, it's, once we get the all clear to do what we have to do on our end from DOT, we're set to go. Joe's gonna plan that he's gonna follow as soon as that's okay.
Okay, well, now, who is gonna determine what the speed limit, if any change is coming, will be on 68?
So, because that's a state numbered road, what the process outlined by that is we have to do a speed study.
Who does it?
Either the town or DOT, if DOT says it, or Joe's request. Oh, excuse me, Department of Transportation, my bad. The, if the Department of Transportation undertakes the task, they'll have to put out the wires and they'll do a speed study of the street. If it's 70%, Skip, Seth?
Yes.
If there's 70% over, on the reading of the speed limit, that gives the okay to change the speed limit. If it's at or under, it's harder to change the speed limit on the state road, because in the end, the state needs to approve any changes there. But, the first step is either the town or the state undertakes a speed study, and then the results of that, from the wires that lie across the road, determine whether or not we can lower.
Hey, is there any way you can get that out of their hands and put it in the town's hands?
Yeah, we're working on that, exactly.
Okay, because I've been told what happens...
That's exactly why we're working on it.
And my question to them was, doesn't any of you have any common sense?
Mm-hmm.
So, that's, it would be nice if we could get that in the town's...
Yep.
...hands to decide. I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of, if that ever does get lowered, there's gonna be a lot of people swearing at me for opening my mouth, but that wasn't a pretty accident.
No, I understand. I was that...
Thank you.
Thanks for keeping up with that.
Next.
Thanks. Dick Williams, Overlook. Just to let you know, I had talked to the chief, because I had talked to District 3 about the situation across the street dumping donuts, and he called me and did not know anything about the zoning Board of Appeals, what their, any of the conditions were, so I went up to the town hall today to read them, and all they had on the thing was the police in or crossing guard that they had to pay for, wanted to be there to get the children across the driveway, up to $2,000 a year, and that was all that was on there, was nothing to do about any traffic in there. So, but District 3 said he does not want traffic on 122A stopped to get in, and it's up to the Rutland or state police to take care of that. So, I'm just letting you know, you know, we've had situations out there where they've been parked in the road, waiting to get in, and that's not acceptable. And I don't want the town to be held liable if somebody, you know, somebody gets clipped.
Where did you see that $2,000 requirement?
In Neades Office.
Special permit for the...
Yeah.
City's only in Board of Appeals 99, 1999.
And that's for a detail officer or a crossing guard?
Crossing guard, or either way.
Are they paying it, do we know?
But it was never implemented...
I don't think that was ever enforced that I can remember.
That is correct, to the best of my knowledge, never. So, it's, it's, it's something that, you know, when the new one comes around, a lot of thought for future, gotta think ahead on these things.
So, so were you there on behalf of the planning board? Will DOT send us in some notes and comments when it comes time to start reviewing plans for the new one?
On the planning board, I am going to ask for a traffic study.
Okay.
They refused to have one done, and not only that, this past, when it was put in, they said they felt that it wasn't one needed.
Who's they?
They, meaning the people that are, you know, gonna put their dunking donuts in. I can't remember their name right at the moment, the organization. But, I'm sorry, but to me, the driveway is still on joint Rutland and state property. So, yes, I want a traffic study done.
I don't know that much of what you just said is in the board's purview right now, other than we're happy to help?
I just want you updated and...
Thank you.
Probably talk to your chief about if something happens in the middle of that road, they should be on top of it.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna move on to department updates. We have our fire chief here, welcome Chief Knight.
Good evening, thanks for having me. Just giving you a couple of updates, what's going on since the beginning of this fiscal year. Obviously, summer's come and gone, and now we prepare for the fall season and colder temperatures. Over the last several months, we've maintained all of our equipment in accordance with OSHA and NFPA standards, with several repairs being made, so some of the pieces of equipment seem to be tradition every year. Our call volume is increasing, currently we're 5% over this point last year, so we are steadily increasing year after year. Some of the notable calls over the summer, we had two structural fires this summer, one on Vanessa Circle and the other on Barry Paxton Road. While MVAs, more vehicle accidents, overall not increasing in the number, they are increasing in severity. As Mr. Sherman stated, the one on East County in Wachusett was probably the most severe, and also with the police officer involved, one was the other significant one we had. As the new school year has begun, we've conducted fire drills in all schools, we're continuing to plan our fire prevention programs within the school system. This year, as you can remember, Dan Dean left, we have a new fire prevention person for education in the school, that will be Alex Harrington. She's done all the schoolwork, and she's met with the schools now, and is finishing up the grant process for reimbursements for that as well. Public Safety Open House will be on Sunday, October 13th, from 10 to 2. Halloween this year, we'll bring our third annual hunting on Main Street at the fire station. This is, the hours will be from 5 to 9, during trick or treat. Sergeant, I'm sorry, Chief Monaco said trick or treating this year will be from 5 to 8 o'clock. For grants, closing out FY '19, we have one grant out that's pending approval. We applied last year through the assistance to firefighter grant for $1.1 million to replace our ladder truck. We're hoping to hear whether we are awarded or denied the next several weeks, so we'll have an answer on that. FY '20 grant season has started. Current grants that we have applied for already, DCR for forestry and brush-related items is $4,000. Through MEMA, the Emergency Management Planning Grant, that's a $5,800 grant. Both require 50% match, both have been funded within this year's budget, so if we are awarded, we already have the money to match it, so we have that as well. On September 11th, we conducted our 9/11 Memorial Service out front of the station, was well-attended. Later that day, I received a phone call from Senator Warren's office notifying us that we've been awarded $524,000 federal staffing grant, which will cover the cost of wages and benefit for hiring three full-time firefighters. This is a community grant match of 25% unmatched for the first two years, and then the third year, the town matches 65%. This has been a long process, we actually applied for this quite a while ago, and due to the federal shutdown, delayed the awarding of this grant, so it's just finally come to fruition. Anticipated start of the grant would be February 2nd, we have 180 days to get the people started. Let's see, just one point to bring up, going through some of the records, back on October 10th, 2001, at a Fall Town Meeting, residents voted to support a staffing study that outlined the hiring of nine full-time firefighters. National average per capita of full-time staff is 1.4 to 2.2 full-time equivalent staffing per population. In 2001, the population of 6,900 people in the town of Rutland, town voted per capita with the nine, would've brought us to 1.3 full-time equivalents. Here we are, 18 years later, and we're finally with this grant, meeting that objective. This will bring us to a total overall staffing of 11 full-time firefighters. With our population in town now, it only puts us at a 1.2 per capita, still under, but well on the way to meeting our goal in the, meeting the objective that town meeting voted back in 2001. So, it was a great accomplishment to finally get there. Finally, one final thing, big, big item, we have been approached by the town of Okam for assistance as their fire chief has resigned as of September 31st. Two weeks ago, at the selectmen's meeting, they voted to enter into an IMA with us for a period of two months with potential 30-day extensions until such time that they can determine the direction of their department, whether it's hiring a new fire chief, regionalization, or a combination of both. Currently, what will end up happening as of October 1st is the Rutland Fire Department will handle the management structure of the Okam Fire Department. They will continue to operate as they are, we'll just basically make sure that the bills get paid and they're doing what they need to get done, and they have some general oversight by us. Over the summer, we received two retirements. Deputy Jeff Low, after 35 years, retired in early July, and as of tonight, I received a letter from a former deputy, Darren Ross, after 40 years of service, will be retiring as well. Both will be put together, we'll have a joint retirement party sometime in December to celebrate that, and that's all I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Any questions for the chief?
Through the chair. Chief, the grant that you received, first, congratulations.
Thank you.
What is the length, time period of that grant?
It's a three-year grant.
Three-year grant?
Yep.
Do we have a sustainability plan to keep those additional firefighters on at the end of that three-year period?
When we originally applied for this grant, Margaret was here, and Margaret's the one that actually approached me and said, you know, this would be a great idea, let's move on this, and she was looking at, as the town grows, and our ambulance revenue increasing tremendously each year after year, that we'll be able to sustain that after the, we'll actually be the fourth year that we'll be on our own.
Okay, so, the taxpayers then will not incur any additional costs?
There'll be no, no, no override needed.
Great.
Yep.
Excellent, good work.
Thank you.
If I may, yeah, I just want to say, before the board tonight, you have a memo from KP Law. In order for KP Law to release the intermunicipal agreement that Chief Knight was talking about, this just needs to be voted on and signed by the board. This is similar to what we had to do with Hubbardston when we regionalized the assessing assistant position, where KP Law is town council for both towns. We just have to say that we're okay that this, the other town that we're working with has the same council. Once that's done, they'll release the IMA to us and Okam, and where we have our, later on in the agenda, the meeting of the Board of Public Works next Monday, we'll post a brief meeting before that where we can vote on the IMA, that way it gets in before the October, October 1st deadline for Chief Knight.
Through the chair. Are we working out some compensation for the extra duty?
Yes.
Yes, that's all being included in the IMA.
Yep.
So, the goal tonight is for this board to make a motion and then sign the determination regarding KP, and then ideally KP will be able to release that document, so the board has time to read it. I think it's a few pages minimum? Do we know?
I haven't seen it.
I'd say minimum three, maximum eight.
Yeah, so I'd like, just, we all wanna make sure we have time to read it. We will not schedule a very long meeting prior to Board of Public Works on the 30th, so hopefully, if there are questions, we wanna make sure everybody's ready, get those out. Yep.
So, just two questions. So, I mean, this is a change of working conditions for you, right?
Correct.
This is something that you welcome, is it, I mean, do you want this?
I won't say, I won't say I volunteered for it, they approached us, I'm looking at it as a long-term issue. As you know, we handle a majority of their ambulance calls, and I'm trying to protect our interest, financial interest in those medical calls, long-term, that's what I'm trying to protect.
And what time period do you anticipate that you're gonna be managing for Okam?
Five, six hours a week.
No, no, for how long?
Oh, it's for two months with 30-day extension. My guess is they should have someone in place by January.
Oh.
That's, yeah, it's not, if it goes anything longer than that, then we're looking at a whole different agreement, so.
Yep.
I do have to leave this meeting to go to their meeting to basically give the same spiel, so.
Just one more thing, if...
I'm up for it.
Seth, we do 125-ish ambulance calls in Okam annually?
Yeah, we, we, right now, Office of Emergency Medical Services require us to cover their calls from 6:00 in the morning to 6:00 at night on a Thursday Friday, just because no one, no one works in town anymore, they're all gone. We generate probably $125,000 a year in ambulance revenue from doing that base service for them. I don't wanna lose that, obviously, because there'd be a reduction in our...
Revenue.
Revenue to the town. So, we do have the capacity of obviously doing more calls for service for them, I mean, that's hopefully the goal we'll get to, so.
Through the chair, you said calls are increasing?
Yep.
And that's kind of part of the sustainability plan for the...
Correct.
What do you attribute that to? Is it just growth in population, or what is it?
It's actually pretty interesting, we actually track age population, and it's the elderly, it's the older population in town, it's not the new people moving in town, it's...
Median age is getting higher?
Yeah, baby boomers getting older.
The entirety of New England's facing the same problem.
Yeah, it is, and we kinda look at, you know, 10, 15 years ago, we put all these 55 and older communities in town, thinking that was a great thing, well, guess what, when they were at 55, when they bought them, guess how old they are now. So, that's increased our call volume to those type facilities as well.
People are...
It's not a bad thing.
Well, and people are living longer, too.
And people, obviously, people are living longer, and people are living longer in their homes, in the staying put, so.
Wow.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
One last thing.
Yep.
Can we just get a heads up, if there's any type of memorial services or future ceremonies, things like that, maybe a heads up through Chuck TA that we could maybe...
The plan's to do, do a big, the big one on the 20th, it's just this week, this year, September 11th was during the middle of the week, and it was early morning, but I will keep you informed in the future.
They didn't want us there, Jeff.
Right, well, yeah, we did, yeah. No, I mean, if there is something like that, and specifically for the retirement...
Yes, I'll keep you all informed for your appropriations.
Well, it's a surprise.
Okay, oh, sorry, okay. Yes, Sheila?
You don't need to leave, just stand there while we do this determination. Could I get a motion?
Motion to sign the letters provided by KP Law.
Second.
If anybody'd like to see it, we have copies up here. It's the determination that, knowing that KP also serves as town council of the town of Okam, they are not materially limited by those responsibilities. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, unanimous?
And you have one thing on the agenda about the oil spill last week?
I do.
Okay, since Joe's not here, can I speak to it?
You may.
Okay. The other morning, around 5:30 in the morning, we had a oil spill that kinda covered half the town, not really half, but from Main Street at Maple Ave all the way down to 176 Maple Ave, approximately two and a half mile oil spill, approximately 60 gallons of hydraulic fluid. It was significant, there was no environmental hazard, nothing got into the storm drains, drains only, that was just all on the road surface, but it became very dangerous and very slippery for commuters, and the goal was to try to mitigate the problem before the buses started traveling the roads. DPW was called out with sand trucks to sand the roads, just to get some grip surface on the oil spill. We cleaned up the intersection as best we could with Speedy Dry and things like that. It was Casella Trash Company that was the responsible party, they hired an LSP, a licensed site professional, DEP was notified, they hired a cleanup company to come in to mitigate They hired a cleanup company to come in to mitigate the remaining of the issue. DPW used some of their equipment. Joe and I are working on putting the bills together to submit to the insurance company to be reimbursed on our costs, so.
It'll be around eight-hundred and ten dollars.
That's just for DPW side, and then add us, like, about a thousand dollars to the town of Rutland, but
Yeah.
How was Casella, though? Through the chair, how was Casella to deal with on the issue?
We had no problem, they, they were immediate response to us, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was, the hydraulic line in the truck itself tore, and it was just as the truck kept driving, it kept spilling.
Sprained all over the place. And he didn't realize until he got to countryside, and we tried to pick up the next dumpster, he had no hydraulic fluid to raise the dumpster, so.
Got his attention that way.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I will say, just on my end, I was at my office at five-fifteen that morning, and everything was already taken care of, and I couldn't say a better job to everyone who was on site.
Worked out well, so.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you, have a great evening.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Have fun in Okam.
Take care.
All right, we are moving on, town administrator update.
We have our first welcome sign installed on the Holden border on Main Street. It's one of eight that will be going up around town, all donated. The town didn't put a penny of taxpayer money or anything from a general budget into that. And I just, I'm still very pleasantly surprised at how quick that went. We put it out, and within a week, all eight were gone. It was, I'm very pleased, and I'm excited to see how those come up. They look great, and thank you to Mr. Steiner for the hard work that he and his son did on those. They just, I'm really excited about those.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure. Name it, address.
I drove by the one, one of them, I got the only one. And is, the sign is this big, and the Gibbs Real Estate Office sign is about a third as big, and extremely ugly, I hope nobody's from Gibbs, but is that how this is gonna go, is we're gonna have an ugly real estate sign, is that because they helped pay for it, what's
They covered the cost of the full sign.
And how long is such a large sign having their name going to be?
The one, the one-by-five sponsor panels for five years.
So, we're gonna, okay.
Yeah.
I disagree with that, for the record, because it really is ugly, but
All right. Dispatch received a grant as well, eighty-two thousand dollars and change. That'll cover the cost of the director's salary as a regional help, because the salary is apportioned out among every town who's in the district. So that'll cover ninety percent of the director's salary, and the remaining portion will go toward a radio feasibility study. I've talked to representatives of, well, I've talked to the town administrators from Barry and Hubbardston, reaching out to the other towns as well. The initial plan is we, it's a reimbursable grant, so once the bills come in, or the salary expenses come in, we submit those records to the state, who then pays that money back to the town, which means we'll have money left over at the end, we won't touch that until the end of the fiscal year. And it'll most likely go toward capital equipment for the dispatch center, radio equipment, things of that nature that we've been looking at doing, and Director Moriarty has a ten-year outlook. But we're so early on in the process, and we wouldn't want to touch anything until the end of the fiscal year to make sure that there's money in the account, and the account doesn't go under. We'll begin a process of a study now, and then involve any other necessary parties that would be involved in that as the year goes on between now and May. I had my second of three purchase procurement classes last week. And last week's class was on design and construction. I normally don't talk too much about the classes until they're done, just because a lot of it's the administrative side of things. But I do want to talk about some of the things from this class, where it was on design and construction, because it relates to a couple of the projects that we have coming up in town, the community hall renovations, any other building projects. I'm told that there's an item to, that's being looked at submitting for the warrant when it opens for security cameras. So it's just good to have a general knowledge of that, I feel, for the board. So, the way that the law is written in chapter thirty, section thirty-nine M, is that there are specific steps that the town would have to follow. The first is the schematic design phase, where the town would have to go out and just get a general schematic. That's what the state deems ten percent completion, and that's exactly where we are with the community hall study. So that was the drawings that we will be receiving from Roy Brown Architects very shortly. I talked to Roy this morning, and we should have it by the end of the week. And what that comes is the schematic drawings, as well as the price for the next step of the process, which is the feasibility study. That takes us from ten to around fifty-five percent, with the remaining being the actual construction. Substantial completion, which is when the final evaluation takes place, wouldn't be until we're about ninety-five percent done there. Each step of the process, we actually aren't allowed to go out for an RFP until the appropriation is made. And that's something that the Inspector General's Office says a lot of towns and cities get confused on, because how do you know how much to look for in the RFP if you don't, if you have to get the money first? So how do you, much do you know if you're going to ask for, if you're not asking for the quotes until after you get the appropriation made? So what they recommend is going out for three, they, best practice is three, they said two to three quotes beforehand, drafting and preparing a scope of services to get those quotes off of, going to town meeting, obtaining the appropriation, and then going out. And the, once you go out for RFP at that point, because it's a building and construction and design project, you actually aren't allowed to look at the prices until you've evaluated and ranked them on the qualifications of the builder and the designer, not off of the price. The price is secondary, if you can't afford it, that's your only cue for going to the next person.
So just to clarify, for everybody kind of watching, who's not familiar with the process, so the money we ask for to be appropriated is based on the quotes we receive, so that we're not totally out of the ballpark when we appropriate.
Yes.
And then when the quotes come in, we have a review process or a team that scores the qualifications of the bids we receive without knowing what the cost is.
Correct. Yes, and then the cost could be higher than we appropriated or lower than we appropriated. But the Inspector General's Office said the reason the law changed to require the appropriation first is that if anything comes in under, the remainder's used as your contingency cost, in case anything else happens that's unexpected along the way.
Did they give you clarification on what to use for contingency?
It can either be used, the first case that you should always use it on is if
I mean, like, what percentage you would put in to the cost?
Five to ten. Five to ten percent, five to ten percent, yeah. And then they said if you don't need it at the end, that's where you can move into alternates by saying, if there's money left over, this is something that we don't need, but could be done. So that's how that process works there. And the last thing that they stressed is if the total project budget comes in at over one-point-five million, the town is required to hire an owner's project manager, who's basically an expert who, who deals with the contractor one-on-one on behalf of the town. Kind of like a department head for the specific project, that way we, they make sure that there's an expert in the field who's representing the town on that project. I don't know what the full study and construction is going to be of the building until we get the plans, the schematic design from the architect. But I can say that Hubbardston is putting in an elevator in their library, and the cost of that is seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Sounds all right.
So, it could be up there, so just because it might loom around there, I want to get that information out.
You also, you want to look, too, in terms of what we would need to build in for contingencies, particularly with community hall because of the age of the building? You're gonna have environmental issues that may not be evident until you actually get into the construction phase. So I mean, I'd definitely take a look, that five percent's gonna be really low.
Yeah, yeah. I can say, so we have the schematic drawings that are being produced by the architect. The next stage is the feasibility and design study. So while people are saying the community hall study, that is correct, it's the schematic study, though. So that, those drawings then get submitted to a engineer, that's the designer, that they say. And it says, these pipes need to go in this wall that they put here, and along with these wires, and this conduit needs to go here to make that office work for that. Once that is all completed, that then goes to the construction side of things. And then if we have an OPM, and if not, it'll be someone from the town, make sure that the designer and the contractor are talking with each other to make sure the contractor's actually doing what the designer said. So that's how that next part goes forward from there. But that leads me to my next portion of my update that says we are applying for an ADA grant. I spoke with the person who's in charge of this grant on the phone a couple times. And I've listed a couple projects that could be put forward to that. The walkway at the community center, the front walkway and steps to the community hall building and an elevator for the community hall building. They recommended we apply for all three separate of each other, rather than aggregate them together, and I agree with that. Plus, if they're the ones who are scoring it, I agree with whatever they say, in all honesty. So we will be submitting those as well, to see if we can get anything out of that.
That'd be nice.
Just for clarification, the average award side's something like thirty thousand dollars per, per grant. About thirty percent of them get funded. The high end, they only fund one project in the six-figure range, but that's the high end. But my question is, you know, there are two avenues to go with that funding. So you can apply for an ADA transitions plan, which I'm curious as to what we have in place now for a transitions plan and how old it is, if that needs updating? My other question is, two questions, how are we prioritizing what's needed? And two, I was under the impression that the money to fix the walkway at the community center, which also serves as our senior center, was appropriated in that original batch of funding that had been approved for exterior improvements to that facility, with the original intent of doing something with the parking lot in the rear. That project was scrapped, but the way that's written and the way the money's appropriated, it has to be used in that facility. My fear is we're getting into winter, and we're not going to find out about this ADA plan funding until it knows when, I think it's, what, February, before they make a decision, December? We're getting into ice season, the average claim on a slip and fall is in excess of a million dollars for insurance purposes. Why aren't we fixing that now, because this is something that has come up in prior meetings?
The grant is just a backup for that, Joe is looking into that appropriation that was previously made at a town meeting article. Just to make sure that the language that was appropriated to extend the parking lot will actually count for that. I'm on the impression it does, he's just getting a double check on that.
Right, I mean, that takes five minutes, it's been months. So I mean, I'm just trying to figure out where we are and kind of getting that done. I had several calls from constituents that are in wheelchairs that can't access the facility properly because of that walkway. So the sooner we can move on that, the better. And are we then applying for a project grant through the ADA grant, are we applying for a transitions plan? So we're applying for projects?
Projects, I sent them our transitions plan, which was
And we're okay with that?
Yeah. Just a couple last quick things. I'll be, next week is the trip to Washington DC that I informed the board about. Everything is confirmed, I will be laying a wreath on behalf of the town at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldiers, meeting with everyone in our congressional delegation, and at the White House as well, with the local government liaison. I'll update the board on how that goes after next week. Senator Warren's director for Central and Western Mass actually came out to town last week to talk about a couple of federal grants that are upcoming, that he thought would, the town would fit. So we are looking into those, but those are early on, those grant applications aren't really due until February, March time, but we're at least getting a start to see what we need to plan for those. And the last thing I would see is I, when the board first met regarding cannabis options for the town with Attorney Lockman, I said on the twenty-third, I'd give an update as to the internal review board's plans. We did meet, we are finalizing the list of what we'd like to include. But the proposed calendar that the group came up with is that at the October seventh meeting of the board, we'd have hold a public information and comment session, like was suggested by the board. And I have checked with the department heads who are involved in that committee, and that all works for them, too, so they will be here for that. From the comments and questions and concerns we receive at that meeting on the seventh, we'll repair, prepare the RFI for the meeting on October twenty-first. That way, we can release the RFP, or, excuse me, RFI on November first. Because Thanksgiving is in that time period, we gave an extra week. So we're suggesting closing the RFI on December thirteenth, doing our internal review from December sixteenth to December twentieth, and then coming up with our final proposal to the board for the regular meeting on December thirtieth. That way, we can award in January.
Four days, is that what you just said, for review?
Yeah, that seems slow, doesn't it?
It's a week. We need to extend, we can extend, that's just the preliminary calendar. We'll see if we request it more after, this is just an initial date, we'll update as it goes along.
Okay.
And that is all I have, oh, and I will say, we've received our financial audit this morning from Melanson and Heath for the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. While I wasn't here for any of fiscal eighteen, I will say it was a very good audit, and I'm very, very pleased with it. So, thank you to Administrator Naderwitz and our department heads for doing a good job.
It's really impressive, and we can all go over it a little bit more at the next meeting, it just came in today.
Yeah, like, it's not on the agenda because it came in at nine o'clock this morning. But you have it, so you can read it.
Under, thank you, does anybody have questions for Mike? Under Old Business, the, the only thing we wanted to bring up under Water Sewer Moratorium is to remind everybody that that is scheduled for next Monday, which is our off Monday. And if you have, obviously, this is very data-heavy, so if you have any questions that Director Buckley should prepare for, please forward them through our office, and they will get to him so that he can make sure he has everything he needs for that night, in case there's any questions. This is the extension, or the discussion of whether or not to extend the moratorium, the current, temporary moratorium ends that night, actually.
Sorry, can we have clarification on the time for that?
The meeting?
Yeah.
Six o'clock.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just, for the public, that it's six o'clock.
Thank you. Oh-five-five, you have a fall special town meeting draft schedule. That has also been forwarded to the finance committee, who we have a member here tonight.
They've got a couple.
Couple, oh, hi. We will not be acting on this tonight, we're gonna treat this a little bit like a first reading, so that FinCom has a chance to make some comments before we set it in stone. So if anybody has any questions, this is the time. And Mike will clarify things.
Yeah, we'll be sending this out to the members of finance committee and CIPC tomorrow. This is just the general update for everyone. The initial schedule here has, at the meeting where we're gonna be talking about the IMA, before the Board of Public Works meeting next week, just opening the warrant. At that point in time, so that'll be September thirtieth, and setting the town meeting for Thursday, November fourteenth, at six PM. From between October first and October eighteenth. That's where we can schedule meetings for article review with CIPC and FinCom. Monday, October twenty-first, the board places items on the warrant. The warrant has to be posted by Halloween, October thirty-first, and then the meeting would be November fourteenth. It has to be posted two weeks prior to the meeting, so that's the factor that's in that.
Trick or treat.
Trick or treat.
All right, are there any questions, did anybody from FinCom have any just general questions about the calendar, was it forwarded to them?
It will be tomorrow.
Will be tomorrow.
We finished this at the end of the day.
We'll have questions tomorrow.
You'll have questions tomorrow, good. All right, thank you very much. Moving on.
I have one question.
Yes.
That means you guys are going to place the warrants on the twenty-first. That gives us just one meeting in order to change, to be able to have everything, because do we need to have our warrant to be placed, we don't have to have our approvals on them?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
That just has to happen before the meeting itself.
So, is there a concern that there won't be enough time to review materials, or?
It is usually very difficult. Then that is always the concern, because it is a busy time of the year, and getting quorum can be tough, so.
We're pushing it back a week, help?
A week before the
Yeah, so somebody can do a better accompaniment?
I think that's always appreciated, because everyone gets really busy, and it is tough to always get a quorum, so.
So, if we open the warrant on Monday, the thirtieth, and the articles that are coming in are forwarded on immediately upon receipt for review, what would you be looking at for a FinCom schedule of meetings to try to make that work for essentially backing into when the warrant needs to be posted on Halloween?
Well, we can have all the meetings that we want, but until you place them, it doesn't do us any good. We then have to have, we've had in the past, we've had meetings before the town meeting to give us, to give you our opinions, and then the warrants get placed, and then we have to go back through and discuss again, so that's always the concern.
What would alleviate that?
If we got that extra week, it would make it a little bit easier.
It's the fourteenth?
That would
Which is only three weeks from now.
November fourteenth.
Meaning we place them October, we place them on the fourteenth? This has been, as you know, a work in progress, so I'm wondering what that balance is gonna look like, where if we're getting materials shared among the, the most involved committees, and that changes depending on what we see as far as the articles go, both before and after, that should the homework be able to be done prior to us um, both before and after, that should the homework be able to be done prior to us placing them? And you're, you know, we might be in a better place knowing your comfort level when we place them, that when you come to the time for after those have been placed and you're coming up to your vote, you've done a lot of that background work, you've got your backup materials, you know what I mean? And it's le- it's more of a ratification of what's been placed, because we've had those discussions. If we did it that way, we'd almost be looking at, if not leaving it the way it was, almost going later, because you'd be less time after we placed, not more, but.
That we do, it tends, uh, we tend to not get them as quickly as we should be getting them.
Right, so.
And so that was the thing, we've, we would need, um, not a day delay, not a two-day delay. At the same time the select board gets them, we should be getting them, because we need to have that, the same thing.
I mean.
Because what turns a day, it's two or three, it should all go out all at the same time, just so that way we can start asking the questions.
Yep.
And we can start doing the homework, because what usually happens is we get it twenty-four hours before our meeting and then it's an awful lot of homework.
Yeah, can we, can we do something about that? Because I know the, the annual meeting, um, we had several issues come and the planning board and FinCom specifically gave input that they weren't given enough time to review the materials. And now we're facing litigation on the things that went through without recommendations from either board. So maybe we can be better at communicating that prior.
Yeah, so I think, I think the biggest risk we will have, and there's no real, no, no huge way around this, is when the warrant gets closed on Friday, those things that come in at that tail end of that warrant period won't have as much review time by any of us, relative to when we need to place those articles. So that'll be our kicker, but to that point, I'm pretty, I, I, I think we were looking more along the lines of the month of October being the dissemination of all the materials as they come in to everybody involved. Is that fair? Yes.
So you, Sheila, you wanna stay with the twenty-first?
No, we can continue and have that discussion. Do, um, hold on, Joe?
Yeah, just from Joe Becker, uh, from the CIPC, just from the CIPC's standpoint, um, when the memo goes out to departments, could it be indicated that, you know, if a, if a project is defined as a capital project, that prior to it being submitted really should go before the CIPC? That's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I mean, we could, we could close the warrant more quickly, we could. Um, and I think that comes actually down more to the department heads and, and their comfort level with only having a couple of weeks. I mean, we know they're all looking at their budgets now, looking at what their needs are, looking at some of these projects that they sort of set aside and say, we can't fund these in May, so.
We did email them two weeks ago to say, we don't know what the timeline is yet, because we didn't then, but to start planning and getting them written, that way you can just add the dates in, so they should start working on that.
At what point will we have, certified free cash isn't certified until the end of October, right? So we may have a sense by the beginning of October, but the later it gets into October, we have a better sense as to knowing what our actual amount is. So, it's just a perfect storm of.
Yeah, no, I didn't.
No, but that's, that's always the case.
Right, I was just.
That's always the case, and it's always, that's always the question, so we won't give for- formal, but we're all, but you're placing the warrants not having those final numbers.
Right.
And so, I mean, we just, I guess at this point, we don't have a way around it, so we're gonna just have to punt until it gets finalized.
If I'm, if I may, to Karen and FinCom, do you normally make your recommendations for some of them based on what the Fin- the certified free cash amount is? Or is it generally a need-based, you know, pending funding? I don't know how, I've, I don't remember last year how it.
We usually wait until it's certified, depending upon how fast it does get certified. There's been years where we've had to go with a guesstimate, because we won't, we literally didn't have it certified until the night of the town meeting. Um, at four o'clock, we're being told, here's what we've got, so, I mean, that's what we've done in the past.
Yeah.
I would say that the sooner we can push the auditors to get us that information, but the auditor should, if it's finished, they should give us a general idea. And typically DOT doesn't change it all that much from what the auditors do.
You mean the account, yeah.
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 I mean, I think it makes sense to, as soon as the, uh, the select board office receives anything, that it gets passed on to FinCom and any appropriate other boards and commissions, whether that's CIPC or anything. I mean, I think it should just be kind of automatic for special as well as annual to. And that, I think, can help, uh, help build that relationship a little bit too, so it's.
Yeah, there's no reason to not do that. Um, the fourteenth is Monday, I don't know that that's a good day or a bad day. Uh, obviously this was set with the idea of the eighteenth, close of business, you know, end of the week. Um, I, anybody, Carol? Not strong.
That way we'll meet that week, we'll spend it each week.
Well, that might be, I think, where Karen was headed, right? If we were to close it on the fourteenth, or say even the fifteenth, and say you basically have from the first to the fifteenth, half a month, then you'd be able to schedule one of your meetings on, on your typical Thursday night, which would be the seventeenth of October. So, there is that, if you wanna kind of meet in the middle, so not the fourteenth.
Because once you guys place the warrants, that's when we really need to start debating them. To debate just the paperwork doesn't really, doesn't necessarily assist us any.
Well.
If we get it, it's great, so that we can all do our own homework, but then once you place it, then, you know, because we don't have the right to recommend or deter you from placing a warrant.
I.
I see what you mean.
Yeah.
If I may?
Yeah.
In the pa- I thought in the past we've tried to, as things have come in, place as much as possible in advance? No, it's always been, we've talked about it and then done the final placing.
Right, you really have to wait until it closes, because you don't necessarily know what things to triage until everything has come in, er, go the deadline.
Right.
Um.
But what we've talked about before is just what Leah said, is that if, if we can get it even before that, so we can be looking at it and studying and getting understanding at the same time as you, because that's been a problem in the past.
Yeah.
So I think there's a couple of things, it sounds like we were looking at closing the, the warrant, the.
On Friday.
On Friday, but then we wouldn't set it, the select board wouldn't set it until the twenty-first.
And actually, if you note, there's ten days there, because in some cases, we come and we set on our agenda to place items on the warrant. In many cases, we don't place everything and there are questions left, and we schedule a follow-up meeting in order to have more discussions about things that had questions, that we didn't finalize things. So that, the, the thirty-first warrant posted is really our drop dead date. Technically, if there were major issues, that would be, the day before that would be the last day to place items, because the po- the posting needs to happen, and it needs to go to review for council too, so, thirtieth.
If I, may I, I think, what I was getting at was, it sounds like it wouldn't, closing the warrant on the fifteenth for the, the fourteenth or fifteenth versus eighteenth isn't a lot of help to FinCom or the other boards and commissions. It's when, when we as the select board place the items, so is that my understanding? I don't.
So I, I felt like we were headed towards a more cooperative process, and I'm hearing what you're saying, Karen, but the fact of the matter is, if there's a contentious article and the FinCom has strong feelings about it, with the information all of us already have, that should rightly factor into the board when it decides to place a finance-related article. So, I, I think, I feel like we, we were headed more towards that, certainly.
We got them twenty-four hours before our joint meeting. And twenty-four hours before in our joint meeting last year, for, um, speaking as someone who goes to work every day, and I didn't have time to read all of them and do a proper research. I would like them more in advance, so I can do my homework. I like to do homework on things before I go and make a favorable or unfavorable, and so that I can ask intelligent questions.
So circling back, the eighteenth is on the schedule right now as a, as a pin. The fourteenth was thrown out, the fifteenth is the dead middle of the month, it happens to be a Tuesday. You typically meet on Thursdays, that's the seventeenth. Would you like the joint meeting to be that Thursday? Would you like more time to possibly take in the, maybe the last-minute articles that roll in right at the fifteenth? Because it would only give you, say, forty-eight hours to have reviewed them. Or you could do joint meeting, you know, whenever, twenty-four, I guess twenty-four would be after we've. Oh no, twenty-four would, there would be time. We might have placed some of the articles, but maybe some would still be under discussion and we could meet jointly on the twenty-fourth.
Right. I mean, I don't speak on behalf of the committee, I speak as a member of the committee, and I would like the paperwork ahead of time, so that we, I could be more informed.
That's a given now, I think that's, we're gonna, everything's, everybody's gonna get everything.
That's what I was saying, is I, I don't speak on behalf.
We agree.
But we do need our stuff, so that we can make intelligent conversations, because I feel like most of the time we're thrust into this last minute, and it's very tough to make.
Nope, no, we want intelligent conversations.
It's a negative decision.
I'll be sure to send them out to the three boards at the same time, that windows are all out there. Um, and again, just as a clarification too, once the warrant gets posted, FinCom and CIPC can still meet after that regarding their recommendations there too.
Yeah.
It's just what gets on the warrant is what this process unfolds.
I think we were, all we, all we got stuck on was closing it, so if everybody, you know, if you would like to maybe revamp that to the fifteenth
Sure.
and we'll vote on that on Monday.
And that gives, if it closes on the fifteenth, that gives.
It gives an extra Thursday.
Well, we actually have a time to have a joint meeting prior to you placing warrants.
You do.
And us not having any, you know, CIPC saying, hey, listen, they didn't come and see us, although they told, you know, whatever, you know.
None of that.
It's happened.
Thank you. All right, I'm moving on.
Thank you for bringing all that up.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you all for coming. FinCom, um, it's that time of year. Uh, we're moving on to new business, we have the marijuana RFI.
That was a, um, agenda item, that's why I gave that whole update in my DA update.
I didn't know if there was more, okay, so there's no more?
No.
Onto oh six five, problem properties.
Okay, um, I actually requested that this be added, uh, because I had a constituent call. Uh, and it was kind of troubling in that this individual was renting a property, uh, didn't have running water or electric, and come to find out the property had been deemed uninhabitable, there wasn't an occupancy permit, there's two renters currently in, uh, this property. And so I called, um, our health agent just to get kind of a perspective on kind of the process in dealing with some of, with some of these properties in town that may be out of code compliance and public safety hazards. And there are several other properties that are either foreclosed on, that have been condemned, that should be realistically probably demolished, um, where we can't contact the owner, because they could have been bank-owned and the bank is not local. Um, we have rental properties that are not code compliant, there are certain properties that are troubled properties in town that have high volumes of public safety calls. Uh, they're not in code compliance, so if there was, for example, a fire, we sent a firefighter into the property, it could be catastrophic for that individual. Um, when I worked for the city of Worcester, we met regularly, the city manager convened a team, a problem properties team, which consisted of, uh, someone from fire department, PD, inspectional services, the, uh, city manager's office, and we would kind of talk through some of these properties and enforcement mechanisms to either get code violations corrected, uh, kind of to add teeth to what we're already doing. So I spoke with both Board of Health and our health agent, uh, what I wanted to do is come to the board with this, uh, tonight, uh, to kind of see if there would be support in letting Mike put together a team of internal people that would meet on a regular basis, as to find my Mike, on some of the properties that we're dealing with this in town, uh, to kind of raise awareness, uh, to maybe correct some of the issues with these properties. Uh, but also I know that during our retreat meeting, it was brought up that maybe like a nuisance ordinance or something was a priority in getting done, so we could have an enforcement mechanism on some of these issues that some of these properties are facing with absentee landlords and things like that. Uh, so realistically, what I wanted to get from the board perhaps was a vote of support uh, for letting Mike put together a team that meets on a regular basis and then updates us maybe quarterly on what they're seeing in town, some of those issues. Uh, my main concerns have to do with public safety, like I said, um, the city of Worcester, we dealt with it up by, you know, Grafton Hill, Arlington Street. Uh, we lost a firefighter, um, those properties were fire hazards, you had a lot of absentee landlords. Uh, it's really an unfortunate situation, and, um, that call from that constituent really bothered me that there are people in town, not to get in between issues, private issues with landlords and people leasing, but that property's being illegally rented, and it's a structural hazard, it's a safety hazard. Um, and that's something that I really think we need to clamp down on, if there's support for it.
If I may add to that too as well, um, when Mitch first reached out to me too, I told him that this is actually something that we were looking at starting anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Director Buckley from the DPW, the two chiefs, um, Director Stevens from the Health Department, and, um, the town planner, we're already looking at getting a group together to go tour some areas where we have high volumes of either safety calls, issues with infrastructure, things of that nature, so we could go around and kind of guess what could happen, rather than wait for something to happen for us to address it. So I think this would complement that very well and vote of support would be great.
It also makes sure everybody's on the same page, I think that's the most important thing. Because there are multiple points of contact in the town that are dealing with this, whether it's fire, PD, Board of Health, um, just to get everybody together to compile a list and go through everything, and maybe come up with some solutions and throw some resources that way down the road if they become available.
Overseen by the TA.
Yes. Okay, with that.
Kind of.
Oh, sorry, I'm, can I?
Do you have a question, or?
Well, it's more of a comment. I mean, a question slash comment, I guess, I'm all for it, I think it's really important. My question or concern is if there's folks that are living in these rental properties, that that's all they can afford, and they're coming and these.
They're illegal.
I understand that, but then we are, I, it's a not safe situation for the people that are living there.
Right.
Currently. If it's not safe for them, it's not safe for public safety, then they could potentially become homeless, correct?
No. No, I mean, that's not necessarily correlated at all, I mean, i- the reality is, let me put this in perspective. I can't let you live in my garage, because you wanna live in my garage. I don't have an occupancy permit, there's no running water.
I'm not arguing any of that.
No, I know, I just, it's, it's, it's more, it's not to, we don't wanna get involved with issues with renters. It's more about the property itself and maintaining the structural integrity of the town.
Mm-hmm.
And protecting our public safety.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's the main component, I think raising awareness, what, to renters to say, look, you have these resources,
Mm-hmm.
if this is something you're struggling with, um, is, is appropriate, and that could be a mechanism of this group as well. But I don't think, you know, for what, you know, you're looking at in terms of rental agreements and things like that, I don't think you can really correlate homelessness with enforcing code that's already on the books in town.
If there's a case where a property is just that bad,
Mm-hmm.
the law says the landlord actually has to put someone up somewhere while it gets fixed.
That's also the issue too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Board of Health agent was feeling good about.
They both, the Board of Health, um, the chair and the agent, uh, we had a really great conversation, um, they were really supportive of it. Uh, Scott, I think, was gonna be here tonight on something else, but he didn't make it, so.
Yeah.
Um, if we wanna talk to them about it, that's great, but if not, uh, again, I would just make a motion that we let Mike kind of put together a team and structure this as he sees fit, and then report back to us.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more comments? Um, how does this stuff handle the problem properties project that was going on with?
I think very well, with that, uh, we've been working with the AG's office, we've gotten a lot of progress on that within the past month.
Yeah.
Um, I think it couples it pretty well.
I have comments from the audience, uh, you sort of need to let us vote first, is that right? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
You none of us comment?
You already have on the books, anything more than two cars unregistered is illegal in this town? How come nobody's enforcing that?
We have lots of things on the books.
See, this is why we need a team, Dick, we can, we can start addressing some of these issues and everybody's coordinated.
Yeah, in fact, the, um, work that we've been doing with the Attorney General's office that was just talked about too, we sent out thirty tickets last week, because of that.
Because of cars?
Yeah, unregistered cars on the property.
Who, who issues the tickets?
The police department.
Question, name and address.
There you go.
Um, any idea on the size of the problem of the risky properties in town?
Just, um, name and address for the record, and then we'll answer.
Pete O'Malley, one forty-three Campbell?
Thank you.
Um, just a scope of size, just an estimate, a tenth of the town, quarter of the town.
Oh, my gosh.
Three percent of the town.
I don't think it's that big.
Well, I, I'm just, that's the question, I don't know the size. It threw the chair, if I can address you two, um, the size is gonna fluctuate too based on economic conditions. I think a lot of what we dealt with when I was working in the city of Worcester had to do with, aside from absentee landlords, you had the, the housing collapse, and there were a lot of shadow foreclosures that banks were holding on to and the property that were vacant, um, throughout the city. I think to have a structure in place, I mean, that, that need is going to fluctuate based on economic conditions. You saw during the last housing market crash, we did have a lot of recessions here, uh, I'm sorry, foreclosures here in Rutland. This can exacerbate the issue. I think having the infrastructure internally in place to deal with it now, uh, would be good and kind of address some of that fluctuation as we move forward. But I think the problem right now, to answer your question, directly, I mean, if I have a constituent calling me on that and there's several renters in that property, it's a multi-unit property, um, you know, I'm assuming, uh, you know, based on my experiences, at least a, a couple, a few dozen people that are going through. Um, you know, I'm assuming, uh, you know, based on my experiences, at least a couple, a few dozen people that are going through the same thing in town. And that's not to mention properties with code violations, that's just that specific situation.
So that, so this particular infrastructure would be a, an evergreen kind of thing where we'd, we'd be looking at it all the time?
Yes.
Yep. If I can add, just for an example, there's the renters situation that Mitch brought up, but we also had something, uh, the past two weeks where we got a phone call from a resident that, um, the yard was starting to smell and there was a question as to whether it came from a house that was abandoned next door or not. Uh, the health agent went and inspected the property and found a flooded, a pool that was almost flooded in the backyard that had fish swimming in it. Someone had gone fishing and dropped the fish into the pool and then the pool, it. So, uh, we got a, we had to go to court and get an order to drain the pool and cover it and, because it wasn't town property, so we had to go and we got the order, the pool is drained, it's covered, it's, but things like that, we don't know about until a resident calls in.
So maybe, Mike, if you could take a look at, at some of the best practices in enforcement on how some of these other municipalities are dealing with this, we can add some teeth to it if situations like that become an issue and you need to make emergency repair or address something in an expedient manner so it doesn't get out of control.
Sort of to Leah's question, obviously that is a problem if that were to happen, but if we start this committee or a group, whatever, and we are aware that property X is out of code, it's dangerous, we may have even had a complaint, if we as town are aware of it, but we're waiting to reach the landlord or the owner, and you may know this Mitch, are we then not liable if something does happen because we are aware of it? They fall through the basement, kill themselves, a firefighter gets killed. How do we get in between those two things is a, is a concern.
So we release liability once we put the pro, the landlord on notice. Whether they respond to that notice or not, we've released our liability then.
So just by letting them know?
Yeah. If it's bad enough, um, we dealt with the situation when I worked in Gardner as well. I don't think we have any properties that are at this extent. But if there are certain code violations, the state would have us put the tenants up and then bill the landlord and lean the property until that's paid back.
Yep. Or make an emergency repair.
Exactly.
Good.
And again, anything, any money that the town spends on that would be leaned on the property through the taxes. I don't foresee any of that major though.
I, I think the only thing as a note, moving forward as the committee gets formed, is we might have some people who are watching this who get a little panic stricken, who are homeowners, who are living in their properties, their properties might be in a state of whatever disrepair. Obviously, we were a rural community for a long time and, um, we've had, and you know, and there's some people in the room that would remember, we have had some of these extreme cases like that pool, uh, like Prescott Street where the town has had to step in and take some extreme action. Um, but we're not talking about, you know, people who might be living in a, in a state that's not, you know, say, ready for television necessarily, but that the town's going to sort of, you know, swoop in and start.
No, it's more just public safety.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just making sure everyone's safe in the homes that they live in.
Can we revisit it, make sure that it is on the right track of what the intention of the board is?
Yeah.
And can I also, uh, ask, I guess, that there, um, resources are continually to be offered to any residents or tenants that are maybe impacted also, just to know all their options because if.
Just providing information, like state information, stuff like that.
Right, and ways to seek help if assistance is needed because they can afford a five hundred dollar a month unsafe apartment, but can't necessarily afford anything, you know, first, last security that might come up after that. And yes, legally, a landlord should put them up, but if a landlord is legally not supposed to be renting a property and is renting the property, you know, so I just want to make sure that there's, uh, that the information is available.
I think it's important to, to echo Leah's point, uh, going into winter, uh, making residents aware of services that are available to them too, I mean, like Community Action Council, the heat assistance program.
Yeah.
Um, things like that, so maybe we can do like a PSA or something your office can put out.
Yeah.
I think would be great.
And maybe even coordinate with Nancy and the, um, council on aging, just in the churches, the local churches also. Um, try to hit as many of the schools also, resources, local resources.
Yeah.
That's true. All right. Uh, holiday lighting.
Okay, second item, real quick.
Yep.
Um, I wanted to bring this up to the board because, uh, what I, when we put in the, the welcome to Rutland signs, we had such a good response from that. That again, if you go into downtown Worcester during the holiday season, the light poles are adorned with these beautiful metal wreaths and they're, uh, lit through LE, LED lights and, uh, basically what that was is a collaboration between the city, uh, the tech school and a local sign company that would help with hanging, so it didn't end up costing the taxpayers any money. I had spoken with our running idea, um, by one of the members of the board, uh, for Bay Path about potentially partnering, if the board were interested, on a project like that for downtown Rutland to which the students could fabricate something, you know, we could hang them. Uh, we could bring in, maybe, um, Steiner would be interested in donating time to do a design or something like that, just to make our, uh, holiday lighting a little bit more grand, maybe for next year. And again, this is just something where it's not a huge priority, but it's more, it's not going to cost the taxpayers any money. It can be a good learning experience for the students, which is what we found in Worcester. They were very excited about it. And it just brings together kind of the best facets of public-private partnership to get something done that could be memorable towards our constituents. So, yeah, I think what I was looking for is maybe, um, uh, board support to allow Mike to kind of run with it and, uh, talk to all the parties and then obviously it's too late in the season for this year, but work towards maybe next year, putting something together that we can take a look at.
Yeah, I, this is something that I used to do when I worked with Gardner as well. I was looking for a picture, but I can't find one this quick.
You're not competing with Worcester and Gardner, Mike.
No, I know, I know. But I think it'd be neat. It's just something nice to do and have in the community for a holiday season.
So I guess motion to let Mike kind of explore the idea and run with it and update us periodically.
Does he need a motion? I mean, he's the TA.
He really doesn't, but that's okay. He doesn't, but that's all right.
I mean.
Hey, it's, it's good. We can just move forward with it, get it official. So there's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Add it to your list, Mike.
All right.
Uh, yeah, I mean Holden does it, but municipal light department steps in. They know how they're electrified and who's paying for it, so we'll get a little bit more complicated with.
Yeah, I just speak to Joe, uh, briefly, because he had worked at the city of Worcester as well.
It doesn't, please.
And, uh, he thought it was, it would be something that we could, we could definitely manage, so.
Excellent. Onward, we already talked about the, uh, oil spill, thanks to the chief and everybody who was involved. Uh, we had the, um, I just wanted to put this on here to say thank you to select and stillings for attending the Helen Viner tribute that the Historical Society did. I believe there's a bench, yeah?
Uh, it's a little stool.
Little stool, yeah.
Yes.
So, can I speak?
Yes, absolutely.
So this is just a heads up to the board, uh, for some action that we took between the meetings. Uh, this is something that came up before we had time to put it on the agenda item. Came to our attention that there was going to be a memorial unveiling of a stool engraved, granite stool in front of the Rutland Historical Society. So, um, the town administrator, myself, we put together this proclamation, just to be read at the memorial service in recognition of, um, Mrs. Viner. Be happy to read it if you'd like, because I think it was, uh, it's fitting of a, of a good, good town's person.
Read it into the record.
Yep.
Uh, read it into the record. And it followed the proclamation by the president of the Historical Society. It was a very short ceremony and it was taped by our cable director and look forward to seeing that on the cable. So it was a proclamation from the board and again, apologies that this took place between meetings. Our board, the office of the town administrator, in tribute to Helen F. Viner, said, whereas on September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, friends and family have gathered on the grounds of the Rutland Historical Society in honor of Mrs. Helen F. Viner. And whereas Helen Viner proudly served as curator for the Rutland Historical Society from two thousand and four until two thousand and eighteen. And whereas Helen Viner is recognized by a grateful town for her years of public service and contributions to the community, including past president of the Rutland Historical Society, member and chair of the Rutland Historical Commission, member of the Franklin Woods Studio Restoration Committee, and representative to the Ware River Watershed Advisory Committee, among her many other life achievements. And whereas a fitting memorial in Helen's honor now rests upon the grounds of the Rutland Historical Society, that therefore be it resolved that the town still grieves the loss of its beloved daughter and now stands this evening among friends, family, and the Rutland Historical Society for a fitting tribute to a friend who served her town well, uh, presented on the seventeenth day of, uh, September. Didn't have the board's signature, so on behalf of the chair, I signed and, uh, town administrator Nicholson, signed, put together a nice proclamation and we presented it, so.
Thank you so much.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Roy, if you wanted the wording, we'll give it to you.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Uh, mosquito update?
The, um.
Thank you.
I think everybody saw that go out.
Rich and Scott, uh, from the board of health had, uh, intended to come to the meeting tonight, but due to other conflicts, Rich actually had a perk test, so that's why he's not here, so he's doing his job. Uh, but asked that we read this, uh, for the public who are watching. This is out on our website and our social media as well. Notice of triple E precautions issued by the Rutland Board of Health, uh, the Rutland Board of Health members and its health agents are strongly recommending that all residents take precautions to prevent the potent, uh, potential of contracting a mosquito borne illness. They are recommending, one, the use of bug spray with DEET as an ingredient. Two, limit all outdoor activity after dusk and before dawn. Three, do not allow any standing water on your property which can lead to mosquito larvae growth. And four, wear long sleeves, pants, hats to limit exposure areas to your skin. The town of Rutland is listed as moderate risk level by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health list for potential mosquito borne illnesses. All outside school activities and recreational activities should end at dusk. If you must be outside, please take the necessary steps to protect yourself and your family members. Any questions may be directed to the Rutland Board of Health office at five oh eight 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 six four one zero two. For immediate response, our health agent, Richard Stevens, may be contacted by his cell phone at seven seven four three one four five six seven two. Uh, this was also sent out to the schools and the principals are sending it out, um, to their students as well.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have not changed from moderate risk on the state map, I believe, as of today.
Uh, we did have one frost so far, but the, uh, you need two hard frosts and this was just above what it would be the high frost, so we need two high frosts though to kill the mosquito.
And just for clarification, the state is the determining factor for spraying and everything. That's not.
Correct.
Because I know there's a lot of questions on social media and just among the public that why aren't towns spraying or doing this or doing that, it's.
Yeah, the state will issue a mandatory spraying order if we are in a high or, um, extreme threat level. We're only moderate right now. The state will step in and spray us.
The last time there was a triple E threat year, West Nile year, I think was twenty twelve, and there was discussion at that point about, uh, on this board at the time, um, regarding whether or not to join central mass mosquito control. So there are communities that proactively join it and have spray schedules that occur the entire season. Because of the right to farm community thing, it, I don't know that it was discussed much more than maybe one meeting. And, and, uh, they decided to allow the state to sort of take the lead on it.
No, I know it's also been other, on the flip side of that, some folks have been upset that there is spraying because of their bees and everything, so it's both sides, but just to get it out there that it's the state that's currently.
It is hopefully right now.
Thank you.
And if you go to mass.gov, there is a yellow banner right at the top where you can click and see what communities they are spraying on that day as well too, so.
You can also watch the planes. Did you know that?
No, I didn't.
Yes, you can watch the planes as they go up and down in a certain community. Uh, oh seven oh, we're going to return back. Um, nobody else came, so would, would anyone like to make a motion for the last three people that we did get letters of interest for? That's oh seven oh two, three, and five. Um, or you can wait and see if they.
I'd make the move forward. I mean, this is, this is full volunteer service, uh, so that they can get started and have a team from the get-go.
Great. All three would be great.
I'd make a motion, uh, that the board appoint Ms. Jacqueline McGravy, M C G R A V E Y, to the three hundredth committee, and Zachary Palmer, Palmer Spelling. And there's one more. And Bonnie Bessie, B E S S E. Those are three additions to the three hundredth committee.
Second.
Great, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just as a note, that that's a rolling application committee with no caps, so if anyone else is interested, please feel free to contact my office.
Happy to have you join us.
Will they be notified to?
Yes.
See Mrs. Carlson?
Yep. Just a quick note, this didn't make it into correspondence, but you did get an email from Laura today, uh, just other business and update. Unfortunately, the CMRPC meeting did still happen. I just wasn't at it because we thought it wasn't happening. Uh, however, um, Raj from West Boylston wanted to continue, as you saw in the email, uh, he's continuing to be our rep. And, uh, the chair from Princeton, Karen Cruz, is the new alternate, so all is right with the world. I think there were six or seven towns in attendance. All right?
Do they know that you're the rep, but the email kind of looked like, hey, you gotta send somebody?
Uh, yeah, I, I think the meeting you were referencing was the regular meeting. They were still holding.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah. Honest mistake. All right. Is there any other business to come before the board?
Yeah, I, I just, um.
Sure.
I want to bring up, I had requested during open session at the last meeting and in writing that an item be included on the agenda. And, um, I was told by the clerk's office that the chair made the decision not to include it on the agenda. I was wondering why it was not included on the agenda.
Right, we're keeping a file for that particular item. It's going to come up on a future agenda.
I, I want to make it clear that there's nothing in our bylaws that gives the chair the ability expressly to deny another elected official item on the agenda.
Mm-hmm, it wasn't denied. It was placed appropriately on a future agenda and, uh.
What was the decision behind that?
It needs to be discussed in a meeting, as a matter of fact, relative to the setting when we.
It has nothing to do with the warrant.
I believe that it does. The chair has the right to set the agenda. It's common practice.
That's not written in, anywhere in our bylaws, and I did speak with prior chairs who said that they had never refused an agenda item be placed on the agenda by another elected official.
Yep, I, I can appreciate that. I didn't refuse it as we discussed, um, as you were made clear with email.
We didn't discuss, we're discussing right now.
Actually, we had a discussion on the phone, so we're going to move on about this one. Is there any other business to come before the board?
I do, I do have, uh, something brief, and I concur with you that we should move on if it's not on the agenda.
We're moving on.
Well, I mean, it's not on the agenda because it was, the chair refused to put it on the agenda. I'm not sure. It was, again, brought up and requested in open session last meeting. I've received constituent calls about it. It's for a recall provision that the board can choose that.
Mr. City, you're out of order.
I'm not out of order.
We're moving on.
I'm glad you made that decision.
Thank you. So, next Sunday at noon, uh, we're going to be cutting a stone as, as one of the final acts of the perambulation project. Can I send an email to you?
Yes.
So I would like to be, uh, placed on the agenda for the seventh me, uh, the meeting of the seventh of October for a final report of the perambulation. And, uh, next week, we're actually going to be cutting a stone, a piece of marble, uh, donated by stone cutter Hank Stitson from Paxton. The perambulators, the scouts will decide what the, the size will be, and the whole idea is that this is going to be a marker for the time capsule that was buried behind the Historical Society this summer. And he's also going to, uh, teach the scouts how to chisel. And we're going to, uh, chisel, decide what they're going to put on the, on the stone in there, so. Uh, it's at noon. The board is, uh, certainly welcome. I expect it to take about two hours maybe. And Fire Chief Nipe agreed to, uh, allow us to use the back of the fire station to do it, and if it's a rain situation, then we could possibly use a bay and the air chisels or the, uh, hydraulics to, to do the equipment, so. But the scouts and the master stone mason will be doing the, doing the project, so.
You said Sunday, right?
It's this Sunday.
Yep.
Uh, I'm going to bring my grill up. We'll cook some hot dogs.
Okay.
So. All are welcome, actually.
Thank you.
This is Roy, if you want to, if you want to come by. We'll, I'll actually be placing it into the ground, so give us an hour or two to cut it and decide.
Where is it getting placed?
Right, so right behind the Historical Society.
Okay.
Uh, we buried a, a fifty-year time capsule. And that was, was it in August? It was, it was part of the, uh, perambulation project, which we'll do in depth, uh, if I can get time on the agenda for the seventh in there. But it was all done with the scouts and the Historical Society. It was, uh, packed with letters from, uh, the scouts to themselves fifty years from now. And letters from some of our council of aging and, uh, some of the seniors in town, down to their descendants, as well as board heads, agency heads of this department. We all, uh, wrote letters, if we wished, to our successors fifty years from now, what our expectations would be, so. It's packed full of goodies, uh, excitement, and my final report will have a synopsis of, of the items that are in there. But this is the final project to put the stone there so people know, um, that this needs to be open in, in the year twenty sixty-nine, so. There's a lot of learning experiences on there.